Good evening.
It is now 18:34. We'll call the North Wewee Park Pool Recreation District Monthly Meeting from May to order. All commissioners are present. First order of business are going to be agenda changes besides the approval of minutes, which I totally botched because we approved all the donosus and we are still looking for Commissioner Hofmeier. That's the only one on here that we currently need, and then some recent ones. So we have no minutes to approve this evening. So the change there is none to approve. Further agenda changes. Commissioner Shingleton.
As a comment, what I had done when I was the chair is I left all the minutes that we didn't have, because we had such a big role in this, I put them on there and if someone handed them in, then I darkened them so that we would know. So everyone would know you're still on the hook for these minutes. That's why I did it that way because I'm kind of thinking we're going to lose track of what we need to do.
Can we wait until board issues?
Okay.
Well, I'm just, since we're on agenda changes.
Oh, certainly.
Okay.
And I can tell you what happened here, but yes. Commissioner Shingleton.
So can we please add to unfinished business, fee scheduled discussion?
Schedule discussion, sure.
Okay. And then, well, so I just had a question about the community advisory board thing. Should that not be a committee report?
That should be a committee report. So we'll change that to committee report.
Okay. And then I wanted to add two items to new business. One is advertising on the sound panels, or we can call it whatever we want to, but advertising. And then the second one is the public comment process.
So number three.
Neither one of them are huge, but, oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, 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 I apologize. Number three is advertising.
Advertising, yeah.
And number four is public comments.
Yeah, please.
Commissioner Hawley, do you have anything further?
Yeah.
Commissioner.
Yeah, as the head of the Clover Valley Committee, I received an invoice from the upgrades to the Clover Valley Park. So I guess we need to get that on there and...
Is that part of the Clover Valley proposal?
I guess, well, I think it would be of the improvements that I think that we had approved some time ago, I think. So invoicing for Clover Valley improvements, I suppose.
So nine, so do we want to add that as new business? I think it should be.
Okay.
Did I hear five then?
Isn't that unfinished business?
I thought so too.
Right.
Under Clover Valley proposal review. I thought that was part of that.
Just do it as part of that? Okay.
Yeah, I was under the impression it was part of that. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
No further agenda changes. Board issues. Commissioner Hawley?
No.
So what I did is I put the minutes we've approved on here instead of the minutes we haven't approved. So, because all of yours have been approved.
Yes.
So that was the wrong copy and paste on my computer.
Okay. So can we create two things here? One is one to be approved and one is outstanding, because I don't know if all of mine that were outstanding were approved last meeting. The meeting before, no one had apparently read them. They were actually, they were submitted three months ago. Two meetings ago, you weren't here, I was the chair, no one would raise a motion to approve them. So I assume that they are still unapproved and they are, so they have not been handled. I wouldn't raise them tonight because no one, I'm sure no one has them in front of them, but to my knowledge, unless they were approved for the last meeting, they have never been approved, and that's like four of them.
They were not approved at the last meeting, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, and so...
So two columns.
They've been sitting out there for three months.
Yes, no, we need to get those, so ones to be approved in one column, and then outstanding in the next column.
Is that, or something?
I can do that next month.
Okay, that would just be great because then we kind of have a, you know, and things will presumably move from one column to the other column, and the other one should get really small, right?
That's where we are as well.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Excellent. Any other board issues, Commissioner Hawley, I mean, Shingleton?
Oh, I just have the question, and I figured I'd ask it now. When will we get the P and L and the balances that we don't have tonight? Just so that we have a date that we can look out for.
It really depends when we get the server back up. And we're going to have to have IT come in and bring in their stuff for us in the new locations. So once they get all that done, it'll probably take me about a week to get everything updated.
So do we have a scheduled date for them to come in?
I do not yet.
When are we looking to get a scheduled date from IT?
I hope we will get them by Monday this week.
Okay, so by, what day next week? I'm sorry?
I'm not sure the date, I don't think it's available.
Okay, so by Friday of next week, we'll get a date in our email?
I agree with that.
Awesome. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Any other board issues?
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Hawley? Commissioner Hoffler?
Yes. So, I think it was back December 17th when the board took pretty bold actions to save the pool. And I think that was before we realized we were going to encounter a pool that had zero ground hidden anywhere, exposure rebar, et cetera. Anyway, so from the State of Washington Department of Health Office of the Bureau of Mental Health and Safety dated today. Dear Mr. Hofmeier, the plans and specifications for project number 2019016 for the modification of one existing swimming pool received by this office have been reviewed and in accordance with provisions of WAC 246-260 are hereby approved. So that was something that the contractor and us had worked extensively almost every Monday from December 17th to now. So feels pretty good to have that.
It does.
Pretty good.
Could you email me that so I can put it in the minutes?
Absolutely. I absolutely will do that. So with that, they've got some more work to do, obviously. Whenever they get finished, you know, we'll add water, get the water right. And when the water is right, we will call the guy at the Department of Health at least five days before we plan on opening, and they will inspect and give us an operated permit.
Awesome.
So everything is trended in the right direction very well. So I will send you an email. I'll CC you in that there. And that is all I had there.
Okay. Public comments? Ty, did you want to make any comments? Okay. Voucher review. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve vouchers 8151, oh, sorry, this is really a little weird. 8151 through 8180 in the amount of $22,664.65 and conduct payroll transfers from MNO to payroll account in the amount of $19,765.61.
Excellent. Thank you. Discussion.
Why is 8152 separate?
8152 is separate because they issued a check to the wrong PD.
This is from the...
This is the second one.
Oh.
The two weeks in a row we had issues with that where they issued for the wrong person. So this one, rather than void it out, she had me, because we caught it sooner, she had me just to reasonably the same voucher the following week. So you can see on the treasurer's report, about halfway down, it's the last one that's lined out and it says patron. There's a credit back to the account of $38. That coincides with the very first one that was a bigger check for $38.
So there are two vouchers, 8152?
Well, it's the same voucher recently. That's how she...
There are two vouchers, 8152, because that's what this says right now? Okay, just want to make sure that that's...
And are we approving both of them?
Checks were issued for both of them, and they voided one, and that money's already been placed back in the account, but...
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It's a refunding for me as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is the one, which is the one that's the credit back to us?
The one about midway down on the treasurer's report, it's the last one that...
$38?
...is issued from the patron.
Okay, that's the 38, okay.
And just be sure Daniel Rose is the contractor or...
He was the contractor, yes.
Okay, thanks, just want to clarify that.
And also on the treasurer's report, you can see the credit back of $18292. That was the previous voiding check. So it shows up on this one.
There we had last month.
Yes.
Further discussion of questions? No further discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Committee reports. Clover Valley Committee.
Just real quick, I mean, I was just out there. Shane's game started at 6 o'clock. There's two games going on out there right now. Four teams playing, two for Burlington. There is, so from where you pull into the dog park all the way to the gate at the base, there's no parking. So that's a good thing.
That's awesome.
It's a good thing. It's all going well out there. I see Wendy had sent an email for the plans for the gazebo, so hope that's something that we can get moving on out there.
I sent them to Christopher as well, yeah.
I think they're going to move ahead with that, it sounded like at last gasp, and then there was this thing here we talked about that we'll get to later. I think that was it.
Question? Questions? CAB, the CAB has not met yet, so we have nothing as of yet to report.
So it went straight from, it went straight from an agenda item to a committee with an acronym?
With an acronym.
Boom! Way to integrate.
Got to have, got to have an acronym.
Are you the CAB driver?
She is the driver. She's the driver.
No, I am the...
She meant she takes the meter.
The meter?
Yeah.
So unfinished business, employee handbook. Commissioner Hawley?
Okay, so everyone should have a copy of, the scribbled on copy, the clean copy with the changes made in it, and there's another page that was one that we had talked about, do we need to make a change based on the family, what's this thing called, family sick leave or family medical leave plan? So the bit in black is in the current thing, and we didn't change it. The red is what I'm suggesting we could add if we want to go into a little more detail on what your sick leave can do for you as an employee.
And you pulled the current language out of the WAC?
Yes, I did.
Perfect, thank you.
Out of documents that Julie gave me. So, and the one that we had, I checked what we had, and it's also good. So it's just a matter of do we want to do that or not? And I have a motion so that we can talk about it. I move that the NWPPRD Employee Handbook and policies herein of this document be approved as amended in this document with the following provisos. One, the mission statement is to be included where indicated. There's a hold space in the document for it. Two, organizational chart, when it is determined, will be included where indicated. Three, section 7.6, personal appearance, will be rewritten by the director and approved separately by the Board of Commissioners by 31 July 2019. Four, appendix B, salary classification and pay scale needs to be reviewed, discussed, and separately approved by the Board with input from the Director. This should also occur by 31 July 2019. This document needs to be reviewed by, oh, five, this document needs to be reviewed by our insurance company. So that's my...
Motion?
Motion.
Yeah, we'll give...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have a second from Commissioner Hoffler. Discussion.
Thank you.
Yes.
For the tenacity. Seriously, thank you for the tenacity to get it done. You know, there are placeholders in here, and that's exactly what we asked for, and that, but realizing that we're 90% or 95% in the many times that we've done this already, we've never gotten there. So passing something that's 95% feels really stinking good, especially when, you know, again, the coin box telephone. And I will never, I'm never leaving that one behind, man. But seriously, like, it tells us how dated that material was, and so it just feels really good knowing that we still have some updates to make, but to know that most of it is living in the now and more of a reflection of what we want it to be. So thank you for that.
Further discussion, Commissioner Hoffler?
Same, I mean, the tenacity, hundreds of hours, hundreds of volunteer hours, if not more.
I don't think it was hundreds, maybe a hundred.
Maybe a hundred.
That's a lot of time, but...
To be able to stick with something like this for four years through everything that's been on, and to be able to, to be able to be here ready to take a vote on updating something that hasn't been updated since the mid to late 90s and had a coin box telephone in it a hundred times. Yes, that's all I got.
And it's because it was a huge chunk, and I think that's why, you know, it just kept falling off the plate. And if we could get it, you know, approved, then we can change it as we need to, add the stuff we need to. That's all. And does anyone have any thoughts? Were you able to read the red writing on here? Do we want to put that in or not? Do we want a little more detail for the employee?
I like the red one. Sean?
Two things. I like the red one because it gives more clarity to the employee, and since we hire younger employees, we have a broad spectrum of generations for employees. I think that's well written for all.
I wish I could take credit, but it was whoever writes it for the State of Washington in the, here's how to make it simple.
You did it, so thank you.
Appropriating.
And we need to put the pay funds back in the... No, I agree. I think we, I like the red one.
My one question about it is grandchildren. I mean, some grandparents are raising their grandchildren, so I...
If it's, if it's, when it says children, if you, if they stand in loco parentis, then absolutely. If it's a adopted child, that's all in the, it's all in the rules and the laws. So if they are in loco parentis, but if it's just your grandkid and the parents are having, you know, can't get off, no, you don't get, you don't have to take paid sick leave to do that.
Okay.
So that's, the law is the law.
No, I'm...
Yeah. I was just surprised that grandchildren or grandparents are included in this, but not, but not grandparents in law. So if it's your parents, your wife doesn't get paid sick leave to take care of them. It just, it just is a weird, weird written law, but anyway, that's why I wanted to put that in because it was...
My mom was out here, my wife wouldn't be taking sick leave.
I was going to say. With all due respect.
Yes. And that's now part of public record.
Do I need to amend my motion to include the red writing on that page, put that as a number six, to include the change to section 7.6 or whatever it is?
5.4.
So I will make that addition to my motion.
Okay.
I think Pat's doing that right now.
Yes.
And...
Do you mind seconding the...
Second.
Okay, and he will second the amendment to the motion.
Okay.
And we will...
And you made it, right?
Yes. I amended my original motion, so...
Okay, got it.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor of the motion as a minute?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, donosus. Business plan, you were supposed to change the name, and I forgot what it was. I apologize.
It's fine, I think it probably covers a bunch of things, but I, so I, you know, I didn't bring copies for everybody, but I sent you all an email today with an explanation and a spreadsheet. So this is really program development part of it, and so what I'm asking that we do as a step to move forward is, effectively, this is a brainstorming part, we're just going to do it individually, and so you have those in your email, and it's asking that by next Friday that you submit, and I'm just asking for if you have five program ideas from each one of us, and that includes Julie and Rex as well, and then what we'll do is workshop, pare down that list to X number, 3, 5, whatever, and the idea is to move forward with a pilot of a couple of them. So we're not going to use all the ideas right now, but it's like, let's get, we all have acknowledged that we come from different places in our community, and so we all bring something different. The idea there also is if you want to get inputs from other people, get them from whomever you want to make your list. Just, you know, it's that if you don't have things that, it's not about the programs that we've already had, it's about we're breaking new ground here. I'm sure someone else's list is going to look different from mine. I threw some stuff in the spreadsheet just to get kind of the, here's how you use it, but then the idea would be to come back and then we'll pilot a couple, and basically it's trying to do an end-to-end pilot of a couple so that we understand what, you know, what do we need to develop the program, what do we need to track the program, what do we need to register, how do we determine costing? You know, instead of trying to do it for 100 things at once, let's do it for three to five things and make sure we understand what the process is and what the resource requirements are. I've talked to Rex about this, and I asked him, is this okay with you for us to move forward, knowing that we have, I mean, we have employee resource constraints, there's only so much people can do, and he was on board and said, go for it. And then the idea is that we would workshop what we're going to work on and then talk about the process for how to develop those few things. So again, we're just going to do a few. It's really similar, you know, to my, obviously, software background where you're just doing a small part of something to make sure, you know, you're proofing that it works, and then from there, we'll go from there. So there's going to be a lot of steps to this, but this will help us move forward. So your inputs are welcomed and needed, and that would be by next Friday, and then what I would like to do is set, if we can, if we can do it now, great, if not, I'll be applying, but a date for that workshop.
May interject real quickly?
Sure, sure.
So when we get those ideas by next Friday, do not CC everyone.
No.
That is a discussion, so please, if it's okay with you, we'll send them back to you and to Rex and Julie, but not to the rest of the commission.
Yeah, and the message, I intentionally BCC everyone, so if you just reply to that original message, I think even if you reply to all, it should copy, I think it copies them as well.
Don't reply to all, because that'd be...
But you can't, well, you can't in this, I mean, in this case, you're BCC'd, so it wouldn't...
It wouldn't.
Right, that's why I do that, is so that it saves you from, you can't see, and that's why I put in the header that this is who's on the message, because you can't see it, but then that way there's no risk of discussion.
So if we can't reply to all, do it to you, to Rex, and to Julie?
I believe so, I think so, because all it's, all it, yours recognizes is you as a recipient, and then the CC parties, which are them, and then I sent it technically from, or to myself. So I think that will work. Either way, yeah, we don't, we don't want to start a discussion that isn't in public on this one, yeah, so...
And when they hit reply, if it shows any other names, you can just try to delete them out.
Or just hit reply and then add you guys, wouldn't it?
No, I mean, the second part, you were looking for a date?
Well, what I'd like to do, if we can, is set a workshop date for when we would go through that list and pare it down and all that, so yeah. So it would have to be, so I want the, I would love the responses by next Friday.
24th.
Right, is it?
Yes.
28, okay, see, and I might have said the wrong date, but anyway, so if it's possible to do it in that following week, that would be great, but I don't know, meaning the week of the 27th, I don't know. And I know, I know there's only so much you can, but we'd love to have your inputs.
I will get you into it.
Okay, great.
I am available Tuesday or Thursday, the week, the 28th or the 30th.
Can we say the 30th? Can we do that? Will that, do we think that'll work?
I'm looking.
Okay.
Tuesday and Thursday, that week aren't too good a shape.
Okay, what about, I mean, we can, we can look at the following week, but at a certain point, we've got to, like, just start moving on this, so I don't know...
The following week, I'm available the 4th.
Okay.
And that's not even...
Yeah, it's just about as easy as that.
Okay, so...
So we need to do it Tuesday?
So either the 29th or the 30th?
29th is our second red date.
That's right, you're right, okay, so that's not, that is not a good day. So can we...
What time is the least painful for you, the 30th?
The 30th is a Thursday, so it's two weeks from today.
On the 6 to 8 on a Thursday. Are you available, or is everybody, could I be here earlier?
Absolutely.
Earlier than 6?
I could be here, yes.
Yeah, I can. I'll just bring my lunch with, my dinner with.
No, yeah, okay. It's like, how did you stay up?
Would 4 be okay?
4 works for me, yeah.
1600?
Yeah.
Rex, 1600 on the 30th?
Yeah.
Julie, does that work for you? Program development job.
Development.
Yeah. All right, so we are saying, I'm sorry, I'm repeating it for myself, so I write it down. May 30th from 4 to 6 p.m., and that is Thursday, May 30th, from 4 to 6 p.m. Okay, thank you. Let's see. All right, I have way too many notes all over the place here. Rex, did I forget anything?
No.
Oh, no, wait, does that go there? Sorry. Sorry, being a bad person right now. Oh, well, okay, so I did forget one other thing. So, so one of the things that, part of what we're trying to do is obviously ramp up to get, to get other programs started, and there's a significant amount of planning that needs to happen. One of the things that, I'll say, I'll say we were thinking, is that fair? Okay, is, is looking at an effort to get volunteers to walk in the July 4th parade representing the district, and hopefully by that time, we would have some sort of program schedule, something that we can make our presence, you know, it's, I mean, this is our demographic, folks, you know, and it's, you know what, I don't know, I don't even know if it costs us to walk in the parade, but if it does, it's a really minimal amount. This is, this is the kind of, you know, this is exactly how we reach our demographic, and so, and so what, and I would love to talk to our volunteer coordinator person extraordinaire about possibly if she's...
All right in the truck.
There we go. Well, but about helping us organize volunteers, and so like, one of the thoughts that I had, and there might be other ones out there, and I'm open to whatever, but one of them would be to have a little event a week or so before the parade, and have people bring a white t-shirt, and we could tie that to them, red, white, and blue, and have people all wear like red, white, and blue t-shirts in the, what, why, what? Why are you smirking? What, what did I do?
Sure.
Wait, and so it's about, so meaning involving people who, whatever groups we want, but so that everybody can like...
I'll wear a tie dye butt, but I'm not going to wear a tie dye shirt.
What? But something, something unifying, and I mean, of course, patriarchy could be great, but something that helps us stand out, because it's really, this, part of this is, as I understand it, and I think we're, we'll get, we'll get to that in a different item, but one of, is the pool will be newly reopened or relatively newly reopened, and we need to remind people that we're here. We need to let people know what we're doing, and I think, you know, again, our whole community comes out for that event, and this would be a great time for us to do it, so we're working on that.
Awesome. I agree with you definitely.
A tie dye polo shirt.
Not going to happen. No way in hell. Not that cold. Not that cold. I still, I haven't heard from Chris. So can somebody reach out to Chris and have him contact me, please? I made a weekend date for the sailors. There's no way we're going to get the First Class Association off during the week right now, so. That'd be awesome. So, moving on. Pool shutdown schedule, review of potential improvements. Oh, it's not Shane's pen.
Oh, is it? Oh, sorry.
It's the one he was using. Yes, thank you. Thank you for letting us know.
Well, let me start by just saying, it's really quite amazing what things have been done and the amount of people that have been involved in it. I think the more people, the better. I'm telling people now, early June is our target date. We've run into lots of things, as you can imagine. Now, one example is, I meant to have it as a visual for you guys, but this one little bolt that we needed three of. Of course, we didn't know that until the event happened. So what they are is our grounding bolt that grumps the lights in the pool. So we needed two in there and one in here. Well, it's a different kind of metal that has to attach, so we needed a special kind of welder to do that. And anyway, I, you know, don't want to detail about that, but, you know, basically, it set us a week back. I mean, just have one little bolt.
Wow.
And we've had reoccurring things like that, you know. Part of the, I think probably the worst news I've heard today was that they are not going to be able to get to the hot tub until they come back. And they do that in July.
But the pool will be open from 4:00?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see. We've replaced major things. We replaced the, in the back room, the air engine, not the engine, what's it called?
Motor.
Motor. Motor. That certainly replaced the air in the facility. We have replaced the old boiler as of this week. We were, where the rooms, the locker room, are almost done. That's projected by, by next week. And the pool should have water in it if we're on schedule, as we're told, by next week. So that's, that's a biggie. The major thing that we have no control over is when they come and do final inspections. We've had, one thing that we redid some wiring in there, that's already been inspected, that's already been done, that's fantastic. The lights still need, the electrical inspector tomorrow can do. That's usually a pretty quick process. I mean, it's, it surprises me.
How long will the Health Department take, guesstimate?
Shouldn't they, the fact they had to empty our waters already?
So get the water in, get the water chemically balanced, and then give them five days.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. This starts out from actually testing the water that comes in to adjust the chemicals accordingly. That one, that's ever been done, programmed in. And, and then go from there to maintain the balance. You know, it's, everything, it's like a domino effect of everything. So, let me see.
Jumping on what he was saying there, based on the source water testing, once we fill, once we fill up the pool, roughly 1,100 pounds of calcium is added to the pool. And that's where the whole calcium saturation index is established. Otherwise, you're basically, you're bordering on running out of acid water like they were before, and your ground dissolves, et cetera.
Okay.
So, yeah, things are learned, huh?
Absolutely, and that's pretty, I mean, that's really cool, though, right? We've learned something through the process, like, oh, this is bad because.
We're like, where do I grab them? It was easy to figure it out.
We made it out. The question I had earlier, now there is.
Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm. Does the ground need to be sealed?
I guess. It seals itself.
Is it sealed soon?
Yes, yep.
I knew it had eaten away, and I was in the pool this evening.
It's an epoxy ground.
God, thank you.
So it seals by, it seals by being left dry for seven days.
And it's been seven days?
Yeah.
Good.
Or a bit more, yes.
So first week in June, second week in June.
Second.
Second week in June, okay.
Can, can we, and I'm more than willing to help however I can, but can we ensure that we have, like, something kind of like we had for the levee, telling people what, not only what has happened, but I, I think we all know, like, I don't, I'm not trying to focus on the negative things, but we know that there are people that the first, certain people, the first thing they do is going to be like, what? The hot tub's still not ready? And, and so that, that they understand that there is a plan, you know, that, you know, so that we're kind of trying to hit all the bases, which is going to be impossible, but that we do the best we can. And if, if I can help with any of that, I'm happy to do so. So please, again.
You can't.
Okay.
Because I'd like to see that.
Man, he touches me off guard with that, since I'm all over the stinking time.
Disney does it very well. So whatever they do, watch them, that's our, that's our ticket, huh?
The watch is expensive, I don't know. Just trying to keep it low.
And to be able, I mean, to, to be able to explain to people too, when, when we started contracting with this contractor in early December, it was, hey, this is the window we have, and this is the only window we have for the next 12 months. All of the extra work we encountered is what, kind of stacked that up on them. And they're seeing it through, and they're getting us, they're getting us reopened, right? But Bainbridge Island already has their shutdown schedule as well. So they're going down to Bainbridge to redo their pool. And then as soon as that's done, they're going to give them a jump on our hot tub.
Hold on. Similar pools to.
Yes. No, I just, I just got an email today from a bunch, you know, it was, went out to, like, 30 people saying, when are we going to open the pool? And I emailed back, you know, that the last date I had heard was June 1st. So now I need to correct it. And so, and I didn't offer any guarantees, but still, I would like to give, would the 15th of June be a realistic number to give? Or, I, I mean.
And.
Anybody who's ever done a huge maintenance or building project knows that there are slips along the way, so just say.
Oh, I, no, I know, I know. And I'm not, I'm not complaining about it. I just want to be able to.
People are excited, they want to know.
This is, this is old people mostly that, you know.
It's hot outside. People want to.
And I think it is better to do it out a little further.
Yes, I do too.
And then we change it again, and we change it again.
Right.
And I think that's frustrating for people.
So is, do you think June 15th, 15th, out far enough?
I do.
Okay.
Probably, but that's a Saturday. And we decided we could basically just spend a soft opening on a weekday just because it's a little, a little less crazy for that initial rush.
Friday's your weekday.
Yes. So maybe the 14th. It's going to be approximately there.
Should be.
I'll, I'll split that, I'll put that out with disclaimers.
There's a 14th, okay, so we go with that?
Sure.
Okay.
One of the pools actually opened, you know, during a, like, a weekend. And it had so much swimming in it, that the rest of the chemicals, they had to be closed down for a whole week after.
Let's not do that, no.
$26 million Miami City, they got one day out of it. So that is something that I think staff will probably monitor the bathing lot pretty quickly. Probably keep the first standard 300 or something, go from there.
Yeah, and I, I mean, we should do all of these things cautiously. I mean, that's, you know, we understand that there's demand, but we need to do everything. Everything we're doing that's new needs to be cautious so that until we have a really big handle on it, that something like that doesn't happen. I mean, that's the wise thing to do.
Scale a little bit.
Exactly.
Excellent. You want to keep rolling into the main day wrap-up?
Sure.
Please.
Well, I actually sent you all an email on that, but to kind of catch that, we had just about somewhere around 50 volunteers. They weren't all Keller Williams, you know, they worked for a variety of things, like the guy who did it, like, people in the back, he wasn't even a Keller Williams person, but he just showed up. So I would say that we probably, it would take us months to do what they did in one day. The, some of the difficulty associated with that, like, this room is cleared out, so everything that was in this room is something we need to find. So that's where we're dealing with it now. But they, I don't know if you even saw the outside, he did a lot of landscaping out there. They did, they did help paint in there, and he was actually complimentary of what they had done. You know, he said at first, he said, oh, Thursday, oh, I'm off on Thursday, you know? And then he came the next day and said, yeah, I'll be there Thursday. So that worked generally well. But we, there was so much enthusiasm. And the major thing that I thought was valuable was there were so many people in the pool, for one. And secondly, there were so many people in the pool who had never been here before. I was shocked. And so much grew out of that that they decided, like, individuals who were in a group said, you know, we should do this again. You know, we really need to have another red day. And so I met with people yesterday, yesterday, and to plan the second red day, which will be on the 29th of this month. So, I think.
It's Wednesday. It's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
So what's the scope for that event? Do you know yet?
Do I know what?
The scope. Like, what are, what?
Oh, we still, we still have, I mean, let's take painting for example. Let's say we were going to paint that wall back there. So we have a number of things that we're considering doing. And depending on if one thing is what we decide on, then we won't have people painting that wall. But, you know, we'll, we'll be doing that. We need to move things from the trailer out there to our storage area so that that becomes a workable space. We've, hopefully, can get this straightened around by then. And, anything else that we have specifically for that?
Stay at a Dave's way. Stay at a Dave's way.
Yes.
No, Dave, Dave loved to help, he had. Oh, yeah, it was, it was a shot in the arm for him.
Some differences is that one of the things we're going to do is break into two sections. So we have a morning section, they go to lunch. But then we have a section that runs into lunch, and then they go to work. So that'll, that'll work a lot better. I don't know if this is where you had that, but I did go to Chamber of Commerce meeting today, and they have a little thing where they have somebody, people come up with 30 seconds and give a thing. So I did that when he was there, she was, I had her wearing a different hat. And I told him about the, the, we need more volunteers in the point of that. And. That's why I have this coat on, by the way. That's it.
That's it.
And just to piggyback off that, it was really nice. You know, I've been on this work for almost five years, and it's really nice to have somebody who can be an advocate publicly and, and strongly for, for this district. And that's what I saw. And, you know, just, and I appreciate that. You know, it was, it was really evident, and, you know, he, yeah, it's called Holler for a Dollar, and he got up there and said, hey, we have another workday. We have, you know, I mean, it's pretty much what he just, kind of what he just said, but with the 32nd version, and it's, it's much appreciated. It's, it's bringing a visibility of what we're doing to our community and to people in our community who are active, who are leaders, and who get things done. And, and it's much, it's much needed, and it's much appreciated.
Oh, one more thing. This is a tie dye shirt from Indulge, in case you want.
Let me get that, no. Where? You're, you're all doing it wrong. You're all doing it wrong.
All right. Clover Valley proposal, I, I saw it on the desk. Do we have it in the other room?
The invoice?
Not just the invoice, the entire proposal.
The entire proposal?
It's in the vanilla envelope. Can I have the envelope, please?
What other one did you see it in?
I could have sworn I saw it when I walked in, yes.
I do want to know. Nothing else?
Okay.
Can we go, can we do something else while?
We can do something else while she's looking, which is the invoice that was printed out. Pass this around. This is basically the equipment and labor that they spent out there in the last month. We talked about, we had money set aside for the dog, for the ball fields anyway, minus the labor, our 10,000 recover and everything in there. So, which is good. So, but it gives a breakdown of what they spent the money on, where it's at. I was out there coming back from, the other day, I stopped by and looked at two ball games and walked around, and it's amazing the work that is, that they've done, two to three guys most of the time, so it's pretty impressive.
If you follow the, the Oak Harbor Baseball Association on Facebook, they, they have pictures of all the stuff, and, I mean, it looks phenomenal. And even from, even the amount of progress from the time that we were out, when we were out there, I don't remember what day that was. But it is, there, there's a great amount of progress since we were out there last as a group. Are we, so, so what, sorry, I, maybe I'm missing something.
No, we were, we were looking at the proposal that they, they had come to us with. And it's something that actually, we, we don't even, we may not even need this. Have we heard back from the insurance overwriters or underwriters about their proposal?
No.
Okay, so we can't even make, make a motion or move on the proposal because we don't know about whether or not we can do it? So, can you please check up with them this next week, sir, and find out?
Yeah, I have, I have done that too.
Okay. Yeah, so if we could, let's check up on them again and just see what it takes. Because I, I don't want to keep them waiting too long. This is 10 we set aside for them already. I don't need, I don't think we need to make a new motion to have this done.
No, we had, we had just, we had asked for, we had asked for a specific notice with a, a certain level of detail, and I think that's what we were just trying to, because it was, it was one of those things where I think we just wanted to be, we wanted to be comfortable with, with how that would, how that would work and the level of detail of, of what had happened, you know, there. And that, I mean, I think it was great. It's very specific. But, you know, so, yeah, I don't, I mean, that's just the payout, right?
That's, so Rex?
Well. So here's what I'd say. Technically, he doesn't have a signature authority for that at this very moment.
Oh, that's right.
I'm going to hold on to that for just a couple minutes, and you and I will discuss this furthermore this week. All right, so we'll talk about this later on this week. When you and I have the time, just sit down with me. Okay. Could you hold on to that until we meet?
Yeah, well.
Thank you. Because you and I both know what happens if I hold on to it. All right, excellent.
The other part of that, I don't know.
Oh, you were out of the room. So what I had asked Rex was, we haven't heard back from the insurance company yet. Thank you for going and looking. We haven't heard back from the insurance company, whether or not we can even entertain the proposal the way it was written. So we're waiting, we're still waiting to hear back from that.
The right of first refusal.
That's with everything in there, so. The entire proposal, not just the right of first refusal. What can we even do, can we even entertain the proposal? So Rex is going to hit them, he's hit them again, he hit them a week or so ago, and he's going to hit them again, the insurance company again, to see if, if we can do this. So that's where we're at. We'll, we'll, you can pass that.
Surely it can be done because the school rents, the school, or the, the.
I wouldn't say surely it can be done with a taxpayer.
Well, isn't the point that we're awaiting, we're waiting for this stuff?
The city will prioritize it with the other parks for a dollar a year, so that was.
Well, we'll wait, we'll hear back from the underwriter who has the legal mind to do that, because I don't.
If we hear back from them.
Well, we hope we do, that we read them, so.
We have been waiting too much, so.
Yep.
So they don't think too.
And we've, we've got a five-year levy, so I'd rather do it right than work quick, so.
Absolutely. I mean, we may have to pay for the advice we're seeking possibly.
Well, but the other thing is, is when we all met out of the park, we were actually going to look for the contract.
Yes.
And, and so, I mean, I don't know that, the previously existing contract that we had with them and see if that would suffice for now and if there were additional modifications that needed to be made to that. Because again, that was our previous agreement with them. So I'm not sure if we pursued that avenue, but it would seem that that would be a good, at a minimum, short-term solution. For one thing that we had talked about adding while we, the one thing that, that was discussed to add while we talked with them at the park, their concern, it was based on their concern. So it was just an idea, it wasn't something that was agreed to because we didn't have a meeting there. But one of the things was they were concerned about, because, because really this isn't about just responding to a proposal, it's about meeting needs, right? And, and so in this case, it was, what they were really worried about was making improvements that we then rent the park or give, give over the park to other groups who then undo what they've done.
Yes.
And so part of what we talked about during that was, gee, should we look at something like deposit, you know, a deposit and a check-in, checkout, just like, you know, other places do for a rental process? Because it was very specific. It had happened to them in the past. They had made improvements to things that, and, and we were unaware of it because I think we can all confidently say at the time, there wasn't any, anybody who was really overseeing actively the condition of the park. And so we understand with all these improvements, they need to do that and that we might want to introduce that type of a process.
Yes. I totally agree with what Wendy said. I think, I think entering into some type of continued use agreement to give them some of the assurances they're looking for at least would be very wise. And I think everything you said is pretty much headed that way.
Further discussion? Fee schedule discussion, Commissioner Singleton.
I just, I, I know that, or at least my understanding was that there, we were expecting to talk about it. But I, I think it's really more of, can we just talk about what our process is right now? Because it wasn't on our, we're obviously not voting on anything tonight, it wasn't on our agenda, so that would not be prudent. And so I think the, the question would just be, and, and I don't know, at, at this point, I think, I think it would just be a matter of us understanding, are we, what, what's our process? Like what's our path forward with this? Right? Because our next meeting is, would be after the date that we reopen. And so it's just, let's have an active discussion right now about how, what we intend to do.
So is there an interest to vote on this prior to the pool opening and have these in place prior to the pool opening or do we want to wait until afterwards?
Well, I, I think, yeah, I mean, I think, I think the entire, I think the point of the discussion was to have it before, but if, for, if for example, and, you know, my understanding is some of the discussion was when would they go into effect? If, if we're not going to change that part of it, then we may, you know, meaning if, if, or rather, if we're not going to change it for reopening, then perhaps, perhaps now is not the time to vote on it. Because what's the point? I mean, and I'm not saying I know the right answer, it just, again, we need to have an active discussion about what we're doing.
Right. So without discussing the fees in specific, moving forward with, with any future fee changes, what timeframe would the board be minimal to seeing those changes made?
See, I thought it should be before we reopen, which is why I questioned, tell you what, to discuss it.
Okay.
Months ago and then because we, you know, move like molasses and unfortunately, other things got in the way, I guess. But it's like, it, to me, it should have been before we opened.
Right.
It should be now, you know, we've, and there are, and the reasons for that are that the people should pay the fair share and not expect the taxpayers to pay for more than the maintenance. Because we're going to use the taxpayer money to pay for all that new stuff. It's like to, and they're paying a part of heating the water, buying the water and stuff like that. But it's like, I think the people actually use the pool, should pay more. I just do. And it's not that much more.
Sure. Well, as far as timing goes, I think like before would be best, and maybe if we wait, maybe we should wait until like the first of September instead of changing it during, you know, summertime. That's.
We're not going to, we're not, we can't, Commissioner Singleton had pointed out, we probably need to make sure that we have a public meeting where it's on the agenda, we're going to talk about fee change schedule. We haven't done that yet. So September is a good time, since we're not going to be able to do it before we open. So September, the change of the seasons, the change of the schedule, that's a good time.
Right. Versus starting out at one price and then they come two weeks later and find out it's another price.
Right. The other, the other part of that is, you know, people may have opinions about it and it is our obligation to hear their opinions.
Yep.
I think waiting until September, I think is, is the right tack. I think first of all, you know, we've talked about, you know, it's almost going to be a soft start before we ramp up to full operations. So I think waiting to maybe a January 1 or something for the rates to become effective may be wise. And I think the September meeting would be a good time to vote on that. I think also just, you know, following some, you know, reasonable, reasonable business practices, I think, I think before a rate increase, you want to make sure that you are again part of people's routine. And, but I think, I think this is on the right path for sure.
So what I heard was take effect in September. And discuss would be, obviously we'd have to put it on August.
I would say July.
July for.
Yeah.
July public meeting.
Yeah.
And I will probably not, I will not be here for the July meeting. Okay. I'm going on vacation. Do you want us to wait until we're here? No. Okay. July public meeting to discuss with the option of taking effect after that. And what we can do is we can start putting it out there. That way we can get, after we open, after we cross the threshold, then we can put it out there and say, "In July, we're going to discuss fee change." And we really like public funding.
The, the other thing is, one thing that Rex and I are talking about is cost, just costing and, and how we do it in, especially in a program, in a new program hold as well. And so that's a discussion that we've just started having. But, but thinking about giving us time to, to do that, just to make sure that everything kind of checks and balances. But additionally, that would be about around the same time that we probably should be modifying our 2019 budget. And that those, that modification would cascade into that document as well. And so it would give us a better framework of, of what our real situation looks like, even though, you know, things look okay compared to our, I mean, kind of okay, there's some areas better than others on our current, you know, based on our current budget, but we know that we need modifications. You know, even what's going on right now, we know that we need modifications, but it'll give us, we should have a better idea by then. So it, it kind of, the whole picture ties, we'll be able to tie together by then, I think. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion on fee schedules? Awesome. New business, audit and accounting assignments. I believe we're good now with all the letters. All right. Interim director employment term. So we need to address the fact that the interim director, we've worked in a couple months past what was anticipated. Thanks for sticking around and thanks for working a lot more than you have. I'm going to pass and kick this to the person who put this together.
So it's on the back of your packet, it's the last page of your packet. It's also, you have an email with this exact same information as well. But so, so I'm just going to, I'm, I'm just going to kind of step through it, sorry. But so in mid-18, in mid-2018, we talked about what the plan was for moving forward. And the idea was to hire a permanent director in Q1 or Q2. That hasn't happened and we don't have a plan for that happening. And, and that doesn't mean it's not ever going to happen, it just means right now, we know that we're in the thick of things and so that's not, it's not a priority activity. I, I think we have the support, I mean, I'll just add to that, I think we have the support that we need right now. And so interim director is working and as I think we all understand, has been working a full-time job. We offered him a part-time position and, and I'll just use his own words, talking to me about it. He, he, he basically just said, "This isn't the job that you hired me for." And it was respectful and it was kind, but it was basically like, we, we offered him a part-time babysitting position. And I don't mean, I'm using this as a metaphor, I'm not saying it was babysitting, but we offered him a part-time babysitting operation and we gave him a full-scale, you know, daycare. And again, that's not about, I don't mean that about our employees, I mean that in general, like it's, that's the, the scale difference. And, and he has, he's done that and he has never, to my knowledge, complained once about it. He just did it. And so, I mean, we have to look at right now, he's helping us rebuild the district, not only from the physical perspective of what we see going on out there, but it's also staffing policies, programs, and like I mentioned about even the, the chamber today, it's also public interaction. You know, so it's, I mean, it's on all fronts, he's helping us rebuild this place. And so I, so, and, and I'll make this into a motion, but, but these are the, so I'm proposing we do a few things. We make the position full-time and exempt. We give him a salary of $5,800 per month, two weeks vacation time in the remainder of 2019, I added that on to mine. No medical benefits or retirement contribution, which is no change from the way that it currently is. And that we increase his spend authority to $30,000 without board approval required. And so, and then I just kind of put some language in there just to say, if, if suddenly we decide we're ready to hire someone, you know, obviously this would, you know, it would expire when we, when we, once we hire someone permanently. But the other thing that I talked to him about was, okay, so if we, if we're, if we're going with this salary this year, what's the expectation? You know, can we say there's no expectation for next year? And, and he said, you know, he agreed to that. The point of this is that this is a really monumental effort. It's different than this job will ever be, ever probably again.
Special.
And so, and so the idea is this is kind of a, a unique circumstance. And, you know, we did, we did verify and check out, basically the, the compensation is still less than what we have budgeted. And, and so it falls within our parameters. And, and obviously if we, if and when we ever get to the position of hiring a, a permanent person, he's, he's invited and welcomed to apply for that position, should he choose to, that would have to be his choice. And so I'm just, I'm asking that we compensate him fairly for the work that not only we're asking him to do, but that we, that quite frankly, he's already been doing. So I'll just go ahead and.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. So I move that we modify, I'm just going to say, our employment agreement with the interim director in the following ways. Make the position full-time and exempt. Give a salary of $5,800 per month beginning June 1st for the remainder of 2019. Two weeks of vacation time in 2019 and increase his spend authority to $30,000 without board approval required.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Can you, if, if we're able to move this motion, can you have this whole proposal right into the minutes?
Yes. Because I've had it all printed out. And you have it electronically, so you can just copy and paste it.
I can do that.
Nothing else? Commissioner Holly?
You've been doing a fabulous job, so, and working full-time. I agree. I think we abused you shamefully, so.
Yeah.
And we want to continue to do so, but paying would be good.
Commissioner Card? I, the only thing that I have, and it's not that I don't think you're, this is not what the price per month that we budgeted came out to, you know, when you divided, when we budgeted by.
Right. But it's still, but it's still within, it's still within the annual budget.
Right. And I, I definitely, I think you're worth it and I, you have been worth it for a long time, even though you haven't gotten a salary. So I have.
And to your point, yes, it is, that, that is part of, it is higher than the director, than the per month for a director in our handbook, that is true. And that's, and that's part of, to me, this justification is saying, this is, this is a unique situation. And not only that, but he's the interim director. If, if we couldn't justify it, I, I believe if there was no justification, there's no reason that, that we could say that. The other thing is we're not paying benefits, so, of any sort. And that's hundreds of dollars a month.
Yes.
And I think that's why, that's why I asked that we attach the document to so future boards may know where we're coming from. And I think, I think in a way, at least in my mind, it deals with him working for $2,000 a month for the last six months. I mean, that's, that's right without my mind at least.
I, I'm good with that. I like our interim director.
Tie dye shirts.
That was one of your sites.
Indonesia. No, I, I was about to say, I have nothing further that hasn't already been said in the last meetings. You know how I feel, we've talked personally. So I think that the taxpayer is getting a, a good bang for their buck here, a lot more for, than what we're paying for. And I appreciate it, we have in the past and I know we will, even at this rate, for the considerable future. And we are going through a, a change that we didn't expect, standing back up and then making the changes we had to make for the pool. And thank you for guiding us through those. So I have nothing further to add. Does any other board member have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Rex.
You're hired unanimously and supplement later? Good job.
All right. Advertising.
All right. So I figured I'd just throw this out here and again, these are just, we're, we're trying to move forward and, and to me, every little bit counts. And being that, again, we don't have a meeting until June 27th, I wanted to put it out there. One of the, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything that needs board approval here. I think it's more, because I think it's still, it would fall under your direction and I'm pointing at the, the interim director right now. But I wanted to mention it because we kind of just started this conversation via text, actually. But the idea would be to look at making a deal, I'm trying to get pricing and I'm going to actually take that panel with me, but trying to get pricing and then looking at setting a, and I'll, I'll work with the staff, but setting a price for, hey, do you want a sound panel through the end of the year? Have a, a good fair rate on it, but with the idea of, let's raise ourselves some, you know, it's, it's for a service, so, you know, but let's, let's, let's raise some revenue through this. It's been talked about off and on for so long, but let's just do it. Even if we might not be getting a premium price for it, let's get an installed base of customers in here. And part of why I think mentioning it is, we can use, you know, we'll work on materials for that. Once we get the pricing down, we'll work on materials and then we can use everybody's help, right? We all have a role to play here to like help get those panels sold, to get, and, you know, it's kind of a sooner the better thing. I know we're still working out some of the details, but I wanted you guys to be thinking about it because, you know, it's really about area businesses, clubs, whatever, and trying to get them represented as part of our community in here for, for people to see. So that's another thing that we're working on.
Tomasz? Thank you.
Yeah, we'd love to see that move ahead. Last, last Friday, there was a lot of Chamber of Commerce members that came in here, a couple roaderies, some banks, Scott Thompson, the developer. And it's kind of funny you brought that up because I was first place and several of them looked, they're like, there's a lot of money up there. They're like, we want our name up there.
Cool. It's great.
I'm like, we're working on.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it up.
It's, it's, it's the perfect time for us to do that. It'd be great if we could even look at getting some in there before we reopen, if not. at getting some in there before we reopen. If not, you know what, it doesn't, you know, we're not going to let that part stop us. It's just, let's do this. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, you suggested till the end of the year, but I would suggest that if someone pays to have the sign made up, let's make it a year.
Well, the idea would be, would be to renew them annually, but the idea is just start, not, let's not fuss about a price, let's get it through the end of the year, and then you renew those, those agreements. That's, that's the, I mean, that's how you do it anyway, but... So it'd be like a special introductory from now through the end of the year for this price.
And then a different price for next year.
And figure out what that annual pricing would be.
Right. Starts a really good conversation, too, when one of them decides, well, there's 27 other competitors up there, but there's only room for one name on the slide. You never know. Starts a conversation, right?
There you go.
And I think, I think that's a benefit of it.
Commissioner Holliday. That's, that might be a way to get that $30,000 bonus for this one.
It maybe. It really might be.
No, I, we do, we, it's, it's just like everything else, we wallow in indecision. It's like, let's just push forward and get it done. We've been talking about this great idea for way too long, and it just, again, through just the mishmash, nothing's happened, so.
Excellent. Public comment.
Okay. So I just wanted to, I wanted to propose something, and I did, I talked to Rex about it the other day, in, in a different hat that I wear at times. One of the processes that I've seen that I found really interesting, and I think might be really useful for us, is, so right now, we do public comment at the beginning, and then if there's overflow, we do it at the end. One thing that I've seen that might actually, in, in areas where we feel like there might be lots of public feedback, well, first of all, so just to, just to clarify, so within the state of Washington, we are not obligated to, we are not obligated to, to do any public comment.
Excellent.
But we choose to do that, and we choose to do it a certain way. But what I've seen that I think we could benefit from, just in our interactions with the public, is if there's a specific topic that, that we feel is, will generate questions, interest, opinions, that while we're discussing that topic, we include public comment as part of that discussion process. So, for example, we may have a motion on the table, you know, we may have a motion on the table, we have discussion, we include public comment before we vote. So one of the things I know I've heard a lot of is frustration from folks who come in and say, well, I don't know what I want to say yet, because I haven't heard what you're going to say yet. And that's super valid, I think. I'm not saying let's do it on every single thing, but I think on things like this fee schedule, I mean, I think there, there are some important votes that we do. And so I think it's something that would be a great consideration, because I think it will allow people who do have, who do take the time to come in and share their opinions, to feel better heard, because it's more direct, you know, like, while we're on topic, as opposed to, hey, did you prepare something ahead of time? And then, and then they got there three minutes, but then the, you know, the conversation changed course, or like, yeah, but you heard it an hour and a half ago, what I had to say, were you, you know, did you, were you listening, you know, do you remember? It's just a thought, and I, for me, it's food for thought for us, because I think it could be really helpful.
I really, I really like the way the City of Oklahoma does it. So they have, they have an initial public comment period for anything not on the agenda. And then everything on the agenda, every agenda item, you get the chance to, to say something before the discussions start, if you will. And I think there, much like here, there's never very many people at the meeting, so it's not much of a hindrance when there's only two people there in a way. And if, if like Wendy said, there's an item of, of large interest and there's 30 people there, well, they're all there for the same item anyway. So I think, like you said, we're already doing way more than we're obligated to do. But I think, maybe we could make it smoother for people, because I think then the frustration builds like Wendy had said.
Commissioner?
Well, I think that in times when we're expecting a lot of people for comment, like fee structures, it might be good to limit their time, you know, not give everybody three minutes, but maybe one minute. Because I think you can express, you know, you can express your opinion. You know, I'm saying if there's 10 or more people, it's otherwise like, a meeting really long.
Very long. Yes. We've experienced that. Commissioner Holliday?
No, I think that's a good idea. Commissioner Hoffmeyer had a good, a good suggestion to do it, so that it's, as we get to an agenda topic, public comments specific to that agenda topic. I like that idea. I like it a lot.
So we will take that each month, then, as a case-by-case, as the agenda is set. As agenda changes, we can move that public comment, make sure we do that at the beginning of each meeting. All right?
Thanks.
That is all the new business staff reports. Anything that we haven't already covered in the... I didn't think so. Wonderful. Final board comments. Commissioner Hoffmeyer. Commissioner Card?
No.
Commissioner Singleton?
So I've got two things that I just wanted to, okay, so one was, I know, I, hey, I usually don't, so just not going to offhand. It's not going to offhand. No, one is, so I sent everybody also a message about the auction. There's no city auction this year. We are on the list for next year. They will reach out and contact the pool. So we're, we're on the list. I got a very confident feeling from, I believe her name is Sandy, who works for the city. And so they will, they will reach out, but it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate, because I know there are things we'd like, we would like to get, get rid of sooner, but at least we have a path. So everybody has that message, so that when everyone forgets about it, it's searchable in your email.
That's right.
And then the second thing I just wanted to, it'd be great if, I don't know who the owner of, where the ownership lies at this point, but we, lingering the residential lot that we have, could we get a status next month?
Residential.
The residential lot we were trying to sell.
Oh.
But we have, somehow it's just...
We're waiting.
Dropped off the radar. Well, and, and we need to be talking about it. If this is an active item, we need to be talking about it every month, and it's making progress. And so...
Unfinished business. Got it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Hold on.
Because while, you know, we may feel like, hey, our situation is, is, is different than it was when we first started talking about it, there still is no reason, I think, we agreed to move forward with that, and we should continue to do that.
I will reach out to Craig McKenzie, then.
Okay.
I think that's who has...
Okay.
Okay. I will reach out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Oh, I won't do that.
That'd be fantastic. That was all. Thank you.
Commissioner Holliday?
I also, it, it's one of those, oh, by the way, I forgot to talk about this earlier. So in the verbiage that I did read about the paid sick leave, if you, if you're an employer that has less than 50 people, which we are now, and probably will be for some time, I expect, and I don't know if it's, I think it's 50 FTEs or whatever, anyway, we, the employer, don't have to pay into their sick leave. The money gets, you, the individual has to pay for their sick leave, and it's some amount that comes out of their paycheck. And then, but if you have, if you have 50 employees, then you, the employer, pay, I think it's a third of it. And if you don't have 50 employers, employees, then you don't have to... Have we ever talked about this? Because since this went into being, like, in 2018...
We don't have 50 FTEs. There's absolutely no way we have 50 FTEs. If that's, if that's the baseline, we, there's, I mean, that would be 2,000 hours.
Was the baseline, it was, it was brought up initially during a budget discussion, because that was the question, on whether or not we had to pay into the employee's sick leave, if they were part-time employees or full-time employees.
So it's not sick leave, it's the paid family leave.
Paid family, yeah.
And I think that the thought process at the time was that it's such a small amount for most employees. I think that our employer contribution is like two cents per check. But I think we just, we're just not doing it.
Okay. See, we have the option, because we don't have, so we have the option of not paying it at all, because we don't have as many employers. And so it's, but it's money. So how much was it for 2018? So we have the option to not pay it, and it's...
It wasn't deducted in 2018.
Right.
Right. It just started this year.
Okay. And now it's, now we're talking so few employees, but it's, but it is an option, and we should probably have made that decision of whether we're going to do it or not do it.
So definitely need to highlight that as we look at the budget in July and going forward.
Okay.
That was it. Thank you. I have no board issues or final comments. Our next meeting is Thursday, I lied. Our next meeting is May...
29th.
20, May 30th at 1600, that's 4:00 PM in the afternoon, at springing dinner for everybody.
Yay.
And that is a special meeting.
Just for me.
So we'll make sure we make the correct...
So discussion meeting, not workshop?
A workshop. It's a workshop. Thank you for correcting me. That is a workshop.
All right.
And then our next regular scheduled meeting is Thursday, June 27th at 6:30 PM or 18:30. And so I have, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chair, I recommend you adjourn.
Second, second by Commissioner Hoffmeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion is adjourned at 19:50.